Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 12th. On today's agenda, we're just discussing the legal ramifications for the town in regards to the COVID-19 issues. Joining us this morning will be the Board of Health. If you'd like to open up your meeting at this time.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Board of Health, Peter Spigone, Chairman. I'm here with Miles Heager as well, member of the movement meeting for today, which is the 12th, March 12th?
Yes.
Two thousand and ten.
Great. Thank you. The purpose of this meeting today is to discuss the legal authority and the lines of responsibility between the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. This is not a community response to COVID-19. It is merely an educational seminar for the two boards to understand the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of the two boards in a healthcare emergency. We have the department heads present that would be most affected by a public health crisis, as we tend to feel that we're in at this moment. I've invited John Clifford, the Town Council for the town of East Bridgewater, to make a presentation to the two boards that outlines the responsibilities clearly. This is a public meeting, but at this time, we're not going to be accepting any public questions. Any questions there? After, can be addressed directly to the Board of Health or to the Board of Selectmen individually, and we'll help you in any way we can. So with that, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Clifford.
Thank you. I think the genesis of the meeting, and obviously, this is a pretty quickly evolving situation. Brian and I spoke, I think we spoke Monday and talked a little bit about some of the potential legal ramifications. I think what we were seeing early on at a national, international level was kind of an uneven and inconsistent response. And before we got to that level, what I wanted to research and speak with you about was, you know, legally, what are the limitations of what we can do? What should we be doing? What are our obligations? And it really does flow over to the Board of Health. In many ways, the Board of Health actually has a lot more of an active role and purview over this kind of situation. But there are many statutes that can apply in this situation. Most of those statutes are very, very old. There is a statute that says the Board of Health can implement a quarantine that basically, and if they prevent someone from going to work, the Board of Health is responsible for paying three-quarters of that person's pay, up to a maximum of $2. That's how old the statute is. I think it's $2 a day, actually.
I get extra.
So, a lot of these statutes have been on the books a long time, but pretty much everything that's happening now is really completely uncharted territory, again, on a national, state, and local level. I think one of the things people can take some comfort in is that while there's been criticism of the national direction, the national response, I think on a state level, the response has been pretty coordinated. The state DPH, I think, has been giving you folks a lot of information on an ongoing basis, which is certainly helpful. But that all leads to what the town should be doing, what can the town do in a situation like this. The Board of Selectmen has general authority under Chapter 40, Section 19, to declare a state of emergency. Declarations of emergency have been, I don't want to say common, but they've happened periodically over the past decades, almost exclusively for storms. So we declare a state of emergency. In a lot of ways, the declaration of a state of emergency has been done to qualify us for potential state and federal aid later on. So you declare a state of emergency, then the expenditures that you make can come into play, you know, at some point if the state or the federal government provides any grant relief or reimbursements. Here, that may be different. So a state of emergency declaration by the Board, if and when you decide to do it, does grant you authority to do certain things. I think the relevant quote that's going to be important is the expenditure of all money so appropriated under the direction, in this case, under the city council. It's all subject to your discretion. So if there is extra money that needs to be spent for any emergency purposes, it can be done under the purview of the Board of Selectmen if you make that emergency declaration. You also have Chapter 44, Section 31, which generally prohibits spending money in excess of your budget. That doesn't apply in the case of a major disaster, including but not limited to flood, drought, fire, hurricane, or rather catastrophe, which poses an immediate threat to the health or safety of persons or property. And then it's going to be supported by a declaration of the state of emergency by the governor, which has already happened. So you can spend money in excess of your budget if you determine that it's necessary under this state of emergency. There are other laws that, and there's been discussions about this generally. There is, again, a very old statute about curfew that really is limited. It's really got to be necessary for public safety in the form to try to avoid riots and civil disturbance, right? I don't see any of that being applicable here, but when we get into discussions about shutting down certain events, it wouldn't necessarily be a curfew. It's not something that's on the table in case that came up. And I should add that I was on a conference call with about 150 other municipal attorneys yesterday, and the Attorney General's Office, somebody from the Department of Public Health and Department of Revenue, to kind of talk through some of these issues, again, because it is pretty quickly evolving, and because most of these laws have never really been looked at, or we've never had to apply them in a situation like this. So if or when the Board of Selectmen deems it appropriate, you can declare a state of emergency. And it really would be most applicable if you determine that you need to spend money on certain things that you just don't have in the budget that weren't anticipated costs. That can be for any department. If, for example, the Board of Health decided that they needed to take action, you know, and there was no money, I mean, I don't think you guys budget for anything like this, obviously.
Not to my.
So if you needed money to, you know, to do that, basically, you would go to the Board, and the Board, you know, the Board, and they can authorize the town administrator approval, so they don't have to do that day to day. The Board of Health has general authority, and I know this Board of Health, you've done training, but the training has really been in the area of vaccine distribution.
Dispensing, yes, yes.
And that's not really a consideration at this point.
No.
So I'm not going to go through all the different legal authorities. I guess maybe it'd be helpful if I could answer questions in terms of what your legal authority is, or what, if you weren't sure what you could do.
No, so you touched on the fact that we have conference calls every Tuesday. I'll defer a little bit to Bob Philbrook, our health agent. He's taking the lead as the health agent in this event, but of course, get the support of the Board. So Bob, if you want to just update him a little bit about what those conference calls are, how often we're going to see him, as well as, I know there's some funding we talked about yesterday, potentially, if needed.
So, information for the public, the CDC and the Department of Public Health, they update almost every day. It's all available on the web, and pretty much everyone is probably aware of what the protocol is and what they want you to do, obviously. So a lot of questions were asked yesterday, interestingly enough, about public events. And the state, the Assistant Commissioner spoke, and the state pretty much is leaving it up to the local jurisdictions right now, because of course, the outbreaks aren't statewide. As of yesterday, there were 92 presumptive positives, and there was only one confirmed. Susan informed me this morning that there were six confirmed coronaviruses. So basically presumptive positive is the state lab declares that it's a positive result, and then it goes to the CDC, and they confirm that. So there were a lot of questions asked about things like, such as town meeting. Duxbury has a town meeting where there's going to be a large contingent of elderly people attending, because there's an issue on the warrant that pertains to them. And the question was asked, their auditorium, I think, holds about 900, and they expect 600 people to attend. And obviously, they won't be able to maintain the six-foot distance that they recommended when you're in a public setting. And the answer was a non-answer, actually. It was basically, you know, use your best discretion if people want to, you know, and that, like, that goes towards the authority of the Board of Selectmen with the Board of Health, whether in fact, you're going to curtail those types of events, public events. If you look back to Triple E, we did impose a curfew at one time. And until we had that hard frost where the curfew was over, you know, all the outdoor activity and things on the public lands and public places were curtailed. So I don't know. Did I cover the question?
Yeah. My general guidance, there's a lot of activities. One of our clients just called, and there's a major road race scheduled for Sunday. A lot of activities take place that aren't necessarily under any governmental authority, right? They're run by volunteer groups, nonprofits. And what happened was, it happened to be a member of the Board of Selectmen said, you know, I want to cancel it. Well, if it's not your event, it's not really necessarily up to you. My recommendation for the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen, if you're aware of large gatherings, would be much more to advise them. Make sure that they understand what the current guidelines are and recommend that they postpone them. It's my sense that most people will comply, hopefully everyone will, that you won't be in a position where you have to prohibit this. The issue of open meetings, government meetings, was discussed. Town meeting, here, we're a ways off in May, you know, we could be past it. We have until June 30th to complete our town meeting. And if, for some reason, that, you know, the situation was still ongoing at that point, we would have the option of probably adopting a 1/12 budget, basically a budget for a month. But I mean, I think, I think we have to hope and expect that by June 30th, we'd be able to convene a town meeting and do the town's business. The issue of how all of our other boards conduct business, this town, I think you told me that this town, we did adopt remote participation. Remote participation means that if two members of the Board of Selectmen were available, the third member could participate by conference call. And there are pretty specific regulations to make sure that the other person can see, you know, can hear everything and basically participate fully. The problem that was raised with the municipal attorneys, with the Attorney General's Office is, you know, you still have to have a quorum present, a quorum in the room to actually do it. There is, basically, they are petitioning for some relief from those requirements, but, you know, your boards, particularly the Board of Health, particularly the Board of Selectmen, you're still going to have to do business. So my general advice, if you run into a situation where you can't physically get a quorum together, we'll talk about it. If, for some reason, you had to get together to legally deal with an emergency situation or legally convene a meeting and you couldn't, I'd recommend that even if you had to do the majority of the board, participate remotely, if that was the only way to do it, I'd suggest that's the way you do it. And could it be deemed to be a violation of the open meeting law by somebody later on down the road? Possibly, but I'd say you have to do the town's business. You need to do what you need to do, and I think that applies to both of those boards.
The question was brought up yesterday about, let's say, something happens in town hall, and, you know, the employees are quarantined. What would be the response? Obviously, we don't have anybody here working. How is business conducted? Do you have suggestions regarding that? The answer wasn't very clear yesterday to us.
No, and we're going to be, we only have two clients, East Bridgewater and Rockland, where we're General Counsel. Most of our work is labor and employment for about 18 other cities and towns. So we're going to be putting out guidance on that. I think, Brian, you've already been working to identify what are the critical functions that have to happen. Paying our employees is one of those things. So we have to try to identify what are the critical functions and try to make sure we have enough people to do those functions. We have contract clauses, personnel bylaw that govern the use of sick leave by all of our employees. We're going to be sending out some specific guidance, but I think generally, what we want to assure our employees, if they feel like they need to stay home for their own illness, quarantine to stay home to support a family member, I think what we're going to be advising clients is to, at least during a declaration of a state of emergency, to relax those restrictions and basically allow pretty permissive use of sick leave. There may be situations where people don't have sick leave, they're new employees, they don't have much sick leave or whatever. It'll be, it'll be a question for the Board, but I think we're going to want to offer some general assurance to our employees that they're going to continue to be paid during the duration of this emergency. And we can talk about it with our unions and figure out how we're going to accomplish that, but I think that's probably the thing that people are going to be most concerned with. We have some clients that aren't all on direct deposit for the paychecks. We should take those steps as quickly as possible. There are union implications, but that is a way of making sure that people get paid without having to leave their house. And that's probably more important than some other considerations. Those kinds of things, but it's really identifying what are the critical functions that need to happen. We may identify employees who are willing to come in to support those critical functions, but those employees may be quarantined. So it's going to be a fluid situation. We're going to have to try to really work with our employees, you know, in my experience. I think we have a lot of dedicated people who are going to want to make sure that the critical functions that we provide are going to continue to happen. There are specific issues that are going to be dealt with, with police and fire, and we're going to talk individually about those. But we do not have, you know, a large police and fire department, and if, you know, if there was a, you know, kind of a major exposure to our police and fire department, we could be really hamstrung in terms of our ability to just maintain public safety. So there are going to be considerations on that as well. In addition to the open meeting law, one of the other questions that's come up is procurement. I know Brian's familiar with this. Chapter 30B, Section 8 allows for emergency procurement. So you can waive the procurement requirements that normally apply for spending money in the case of an emergency. We've done that in the past. The guidance we would give to everybody is you still should make sure that it's a best business practice, that you're not just spending money without documenting what you're spending it on and why you're spending it. That's going to be critical going forward. We can actually, there are actually provisions of the law, if it came down to this, for us to call back retired employees, and they can earn money above and beyond what their normal limitations are in terms of what they can earn. So there is some flexibility in terms of mobilizing people. We are going to have to have conversations with our unions to talk about this. Again, this is, this is all new territory. But I think the guidance that we're going to be giving people is, you know, these are going to be personal decisions for all of our employees, all the officials, whether they can come to work, don't come to work, however they want to do it. And I think we want to try to support that to the degree that we can. What questions can I answer?
Not from Board of Health standpoint. I mean, we've, like I said, had the meetings and listened to the conferences. We'll pass the information out as it's brought to us. They're doing a pretty good job, I would say, getting that information and posting, giving it to us to be able to post out and send out, so, you know. From that standpoint, it's just going to be dealing with the local committees or events that go on, and, you know, obviously explaining to them what the situations are and, you know, how they're going to proceed, if they are going to proceed with that event. But other than that, we just don't want people to panic. I guess that's our, you know, that's our main goal here, just to kind of keep things in perspective. We've been in these situations before.
Yep.
In this, not, maybe not at this level, but certainly where we had information we had to get out.
We had a H1N1.
H1N1 was a good example back in, like, 2009. So I think we're prepared from our board standpoint, just making sure that there's control and.
And I might add, if I can, after 9/11, Homeland Security, I mean, when Homeland Security was set up, the federal government decided that they were going to fund the local boards of health directly. This was when we had a small portion, anthrax, and some other threats. So we were charged with, through the Coalition, which is the Emergency Prevention Board, to come up with a plan and be able to vaccinate the town in two and a half days. So we used to run our flu clinics as an emergency dispensing site, it's called an ADS site, in the old high school. We have an updated plan for the new high school. We have no vaccine yet, so I just want everybody to understand that if vaccine does become available, we have a plan in place. And on another note, we had a call-down drill last week, and we had 86% response. So basically, a call-down drill is the people you call when you have to set your emergency dispensing site up. So we had great response, we had great cooperation between the departments, and that was encouraging. H1N1 was pretty serious. Only 500, about 500 people in town decided to get vaccinated. And I would suspect the numbers would be low for this particular vaccine, if and when it becomes available.
The one question that has come up is, and I don't know if there's anyone from the schools here about, you know, who's got the authority to cancel school events, shut down schools.
Superintendent is here. Morning, Mr. President.
We have a seat for you, it's right up here.
The superintendent of schools has that authority, just as she does, under, so the superintendent, and the school committee has control over all school facilities, so it's really exclusively their call. That's, so if that question is asked, it's exclusively the demand of the school department.
Has the Department of Education provided any guidance if the schools need to be shut down? Like, how that will pan out with makeup days?
I have a conference call tomorrow, 8:30, with the Commissioner, DPH. So we, as much as the Department of Health is being conference-called, we're having them on a daily basis. I'm in contact with all the other superintendents in the Commonwealth. We're all facing the same issues, taking it one day at a time. And again, we don't want to panic. Our schools don't want to panic. We're doing the best that we can to maintain and to keep up with it. And I can let you know that we had a dance and an overnight lockdown scheduled for this weekend. We were going to postpone those events because they were over a certain number of kids. But our basketball is still on, you know, the youth basketball at the schools are still going on. We're still going to continue to do the same thing that we do every day. However, we have been putting plans in place. We have 547 students that have free and reduced lunch. If, in fact, that we were going to close down schools, we would certainly do bag lunches. I spoke to the food director, we're ready to do that. Who would come in? Who would do that? Where would the facility be? Where would we prep? How would we get those bag lunches or box lunches to students and out to the community? Mr. Shea worked with the, he works with technology for the school district. They are working on a plan for Google Classroom. He's, we're surveying parents and students right now who do not have access to the internet in their homes. How would we provide schooling for those students who do not have access to technology? Dr. Williams is working with students or with parents who might have a compromised immune system, because she oversees homeschooling. She'll be working with those families to make sure that they have access and opportunity to the curriculum and instruction through the teachers and through her office. But we're, I would say that the schools and my colleagues across the Commonwealth are ready. I think this is not uncommon for us to deal with anything that comes into a building. I hate to say it, but pre-K, K1, 2 deals with this on a daily basis for the common cold, influenza. They touch everything, their mouths are on everything, they like to hug, because those are their friends. That is something that we're, Mrs. Byrne and the teachers are working very diligently on, that, you know, let's not hug today. And that's difficult, that's difficult for a three- and a four-year-old not to do, and a six-year-old. They hug when they get off the bus, and they hug when they go on the bus. We had someone cry yesterday because she couldn't hug her friend when they got on the bus. So we're ready for this. I mean, unfortunately, we're not ready for, I mean, no one wants to say you're ready for this, but I think the schools can handle where we're at. But yes, tomorrow at 8:30, and I will certainly keep in contact with Mr. Noble.
Anything else from the Board, or?
The Kiwanis made the decision last night to cancel or postpone the pancake breakfast. They just felt that, and I was not involved in that decision, but they felt that, since so many of the people who attend that are seniors, that it just wasn't a good idea to do that at this time. So, and they let you know that.
I spoke to Elbert last night, we were waiting for them to come over, and we had a meeting at 4:30, and then he and I got on the telephone around 5:15, and he said, you know, I think it's for the best of the situation of where we're at. I just wanted to mention, I want to thank the maintenance department, the DPW, for their continued support. We, Brian, Kylie, all of our custodians have done a great job. I've put an extra custodian on in each building for this week. We'll assess tomorrow whether we continue to do that, which right now, it looks like we'll continue to, but this person only, only is there for disinfecting. Just for the doorknobs, for the windows, for the staircases, and the railings in the staircases, the elevators, places that are in the bathrooms. So that's all that they're doing, and that's, they're continually just moving around. And the, I can't say enough about that. We did talk to Bill Lucini on our transportation. They were, he came over to meet with me personally. They're wiping down the buses after the morning run, after the afternoon run. We have even offered them our, we do have a, what's that called?
Electrostatic disinfectant.
They are electrodisinfectant, electrostatic disinfectant gun. Gun. Sorry, chief, I don't know, Paul, I don't know what the other word would be for that, but it's a fogger, and it sends out a disinfectant. So we've offered that, and Mr. Kylie will bring that over if we, if we go into that area to spray the buses.
Can you push that back a little, please?
So, just to keep the Board informed, we are working on our IT infrastructure a little bit more for an emergency plan with Brian McGonigal. As you know, we split our IT with Hanson, which is why John is here today from Hanson to discuss that. We're working to make sure that we can preserve the continuity of our data and our access so we have backup plants.
Anything else?
No, I think that the united message of don't panic, you know, we're on top of it, the Board of Health is on top of it, the schools are clearly on top of it, we as the Board of Selectmen are, you know, working with Brian, not, don't panic.
I think our focus for all the department heads is going to be the critical functions, making sure whatever needs to be done, that the next in line, and then the next in line is able to do that. I mean, go three or four deep if we have to. You know, like John was saying, like, just make sure people get paid, you know, making sure we try and get people over to direct deposit, which in this day and age, I still don't understand why everyone's not even doing that. Working with the Council on Aging, making sure we have backup for Meals on Wheels.
We have to look at the Council on Aging for all the activities they have down there. They're open from eight to four o'clock every day with activities going on constantly, as well as we have to take a look at the library, finding what's happening up there. And these are things that, after we're through here, we have to get into.
I know that the DPH is supposed to issue some guidelines for councils on aging tomorrow, and the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is supposed to do the same for libraries, so.
And just for the folks at home, I mean, you know, we're doing everything we can on our end, and really just, you know, focus on the CDC website. I mean, you know, take what you see on the news with a grain of salt and just follow, you know, the official websites from the state and the federal government will be doing the same, so.
Please don't take what you read on Facebook as, you know, the guaranteed, everything's state-of-the-hall away from it. And listen to the people that have the knowledge passing it out.
There are so many rumors out there. I mean, I had someone on my staff come to me yesterday and say, oh, I heard that there's a meeting at four o'clock, and all Massachusetts schools are closing for two weeks. And, you know, I don't think that's true, so I think as much as people can, just, you know, trust, trust your sources, and you'll know who those sources are that you should trust.
Wash your hands, stay away, I mean, yeah, we'll keep an eye on things.
For any board or committee that has, you know, an issue relating to this, you can have emergency meetings. You don't have to strictly follow the 48 hours. If you need to have a meeting in less than 48 hours on an hour's notice... If you need to have a meeting in less than 48 hours on an hour's notice, then that's what you should do. There is an emergency provision under the open meeting law.
We can do it remotely, remember that.
Anything else? Make motion, take motion.
If I may, can I just say one more thing? There was rumors, and they are in our community, on behalf of the School Committee and the District of East Bridgewater, we do not have a staff member, any personnel, any faculty member, any student that has a confirmed case of COVID-19 coronavirus. And people need to remember, and I thank you for saying that, people need to remember, when you're on social media, take a deep breath, because it's somebody's mother, somebody's father, somebody's child. Stop throwing stones, stay focused, and we'll get through it. Thank you.
Yeah. Well put.
Anything else? Home favor? All right. Thank you.
The department heads might want to stay for a minute.